Our live, this is the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Coffey County Board of Education. Um, we start as, as always with, with a prayer and Mr. Hansard is going to offer up our prayer.
If you'll bow with me, please. Our dear, most gracious heavenly father, we want to thank you for this another day that you've given us, dear lord, and dear lord, we pray that you will go with our employees that are off over the summer break, we pray that you would, you know, grant them travel grace, dear lord, as they go in from their vacations, and I pray that, dear lord, that you'll go, watch over us, go with us through this meeting, that we may do the things that you would, would be looking up to you, dear lord, and, and best things for our school system. Dear lord, now, we pray that you'll just go with us, watch over and care for us, and we'd be careful to give you all the praise in thy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First order of business tonight, Mr. Hargrove, we have a recognition of Leah Parsley, and that's going to be led by Mr. Hargrove.
Ms. Parsley? Come forward, yes, ma'am. She was nominated by Ms. Mary McCartney, our music teacher at Deerfield Elementary, and she is the administrator of the year for our fine arts. This is awesome. She sets a great example and supports our fine arts and our school building, but congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
That's for the entire state.
Yeah. Awesome job. All right, next up, we have a presentation. Dr. Cornelius is going to give us an update on the TESA accountability, our quarterly update.
All right, and of course, you know, I'm only going to speak to the TESA accountability goals that relate, but I will say that the proficiency rates are no longer under embargo, so those have been, those have been released for district and state, okay? So, that's not, that's not embargoed any longer. But on our third grade, I'll talk about that one, that was goal number one first, the third grade ELA proficiency goal. The district goal, we set at forty-two point five, we did not meet that goal, the results were thirty-four point four percent proficient rate at a district level. That represents a nine tenths of a percent increase from last year. But I do want to, however, right now, I want to call out one of the elementary schools that was an outlier in performance on the proficiency rate, and that was Hickerson Elementary. Hickerson outperformed at a rate of fifty-one point four percent. Now, they far exceeded, their proficiency rate far exceeded any of the others on the proficiency for the district. Now, had we all gotten to that, then we would have been way up there at where we needed to be. Now, the, the, the goal for next year, that's the twenty-five, twenty-six school year that we're entering, it will be locked in at fifty-one point five percent no matter what, okay? Because that gets into the, when we're in the third, this will be the third year, and that represents the halfway point from the original gap closure. You have to close the gap fifty percent from the original to get to the seventy percent proficiency rate. So, it will be fifty-one point five no matter what this year. But they did, they did that, and I attribute a lot of that to their laser-focused interventions that they used out there. I know they made data files on all third, fourth, and fifth grade students, I know they had data chats with all of them. I know that because I did some of them myself, because they called for help, and I know I went out there and helped them, and Otanya Garner went out and helped also with some of those when they, when they asked for it. And I know that the assistant principal, and you've got to remember, every elementary assistant principal instructional coordinator is supposed to be their focus, that's their focus. And I know that their assistant principal out there, she did a lot of targeted intervention with them on the writing portion of the third grade, especially the third grade exam and across the board. That represents sixteen points out of the fifty-two that are scoreable for that exam. So, they did, they, they did very, they did very well. And some other numbers are coming in across the district too, and they have done, I can't release, I can't release some of those yet, but they have done, they, they also have done well there. So, I, I wanted to call them out for, because I know they have worked extremely hard this year, so I did want to call that out. Goal number two is the high school, their ready grad goal. Now, ready grad, you've got to understand that I'm in the middle of three phases of accountability right now, and ready grad, ready grad for how we will be federally rated this year lags a year. Your ready grad will lag one year, and graduation rate will lag by one year. So, the ready grad for the two thousand twenty-four graduating cohort is what will be judged on this year. It's really, it was, it was really good. They'll score, they'll score a four out of four points on that, because their absolute measure was exceeded the forty percent at forty, the, the, at forty-two, they had forty-two point one. We set a goal at forty-four point two, and this is not embargoed, because we can, we can calculate, we can calculate this on our own. This is an unofficial number, my numbers are not official, I usually get them within about a tenth of a point, but this is not, this is not official. But I show right now a hundred eighty-two of three hundred seventy-two in the graduating cohort meeting ready grad status in the two thousand twenty-five graduating cohort. And if that holds true, that'll put them at a forty-eight point nine percent, which will still make them have the most points you can have under the ready graduate metric. So, that's good. Now, TDOE accountability is looking at redoing some of these metrics. It could be, they're saying that ready graduate may disappear, and it'll all go to career college ready and get to one, get to one metric instead of having to manage two different ones. And there's some other things that they're doing to state and federal accountability protocols, they've talked to us about it, but they'll release that final decision in August. And ready grad makes up twenty percent, by the way, of their final score to get designated on reward schools. And I know that with chronic absenteeism this year, they've done extremely well, that's going to be ten percent, ready grad's twenty percent, they get a score, that's going to be a zero point eight points out of that. And I know that with chronically absent, they get the four, that'll be point four, so they'll already be at one point two points before growth and achievement are counted in. And the heat maps will come out at the end of August, and you have to have three point one or higher on the heat map to be a reward school. So, you know, who knows, they may be on their way. I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about some of this. And let's see, goal three is eighth grade ELA proficiency. Now, at eighth grade, we set the goal to twenty-nine point one. It stayed at twenty-five point four, which is unusual to be completely the same from one year to the next, but there was no change, so no growth there on the ELA proficiency. The state, the state average was twenty-nine point six, okay? So, we were a little bit below. But now, understand, I'm only, I'm only giving you the ones that are TESA goal-related, there's many more areas, and there are successes, there are a lot of successes in the data that Dr. Blessing will present later at a different meeting, and, you know, I just wanted to let you know that. And then, goal number four is eighth grade math proficiency, and we set the goal to thirty-five point five, and we met thirty-two point five, and that's a very modest, that's, it's an increase, it's a modest increase, it's a two tenths of a percent increase from the previous year. The state was at thirty-six point two. So, when we redo these goals this year, we may look at, you know, we, we definitely want to be at or above state average. I mean, you definitely want to do, you definitely want to shoot for that in all of those areas. And as far as TESA formula and TESA funding, all the numbers are in, they're finalized from last year. We did come out, even with the, even with the base increase raise of a little over two hundred dollars per student, we've still come out a little better than what April budgeted. So, it was very, it was a very good number, and the CTE area still scored very, CTE is different now, because there's no blanket amount given to them anymore. It matters what level the student is in, what courses they're taking, because some courses are not weighted at the same amount that other courses are, and it also depends on what part of the state you're in, because the Department of Labor has provided statistics to say what part of the state has a higher demand in some of the, some of those areas. But C, so CTE is funded a little differently there, but they came out, they came out very, very good also. I do think that with some of the, some of the issues going on at the federal level, because as you know, the state still gets some of that, some of these dollars still come from federal levels. I don't know for sure, I've not been told this, this is supposition and hypothesis, but I believe that probably the TESA outcome bonus may disappear, period, okay? That would be the first, that would be the first most likely place to see a cut, and so I kind of think that that may, may disappear very quickly. Other than that, that's your update, that's your update right now on TESA accountability.
Quick question, backing up to the third, or the eighth grade ELA, did I hear you correctly that the state average was twenty-nine percent?
State average is twenty-nine point six.
So, the entire state of Tennessee, less than a third of the kids are proficient?
That's right.
In eighth grade ELA?
That is correct. That is correct.
That's astounding.
Yep. That's correct. Yep, twenty-nine, twenty-nine point six was the state, was the state average on eighth grade ELA.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, each, each subtest is going to have a different state average naturally.
Yeah, I understand.
Each grade level's going to have a different state average too.
So, what is the state goal for third, eighth grade ELA?
I don't think the state sets a goal.
Okay.
Because it's going to, it will always be a, it will always be a movable number from year to year based upon how that particular cohort scores.
They do have a goal for third grade ELA.
They have a goal for, they have, the only goal they have that, yes, that they tied in, or codified into law, was the third grade ELA, and that was seventy percent proficiency, which is very lofty, but seventy percent proficiency by twenty-thirty, I believe, I think, I think it's twenty-thirty, is it twenty-thirty or twenty-twenty-eight, I think, I think it's twenty-thirty, I think it's twenty-thirty, it's on my desk, I think it's twenty-thirty.
All right, any questions for Dr. Cornelius?
No. All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to your next quarterly update. All right, now, we're ready to proceed with the, the call to order for the business section of our meeting. We don't have any public comment. We do have some, some principals here. Oh, ignore the man behind the curtain. So, principal reports.
Today's the elementary principal's first day back officially, so we are, we're all back and working today. Went to the school building, and we have lots of teachers that are already there, excited for the new year, that are getting ready for the kids to come back, and I kept quite a few, a lot more than what I thought I would, so it's really exciting to see that they're excited about coming back to the school, new school year. Our open house is July twenty-eighth from five, uh, three o'clock until five o'clock, so if you'd like to come visit us on the twenty-eighth, three o'clock to five o'clock, that's all we've got right now, because we've been out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I have to add to what Leah had is that our back-to-school bash at Hickerson is July twenty-ninth from four to five P.M., so.
All right, thank you.
Good to see everybody. Open house for middle school, we're, we started something new last year, I think it really helped parents out a lot, we got a lot of positive feedback about how we did that, so we're going to continue that trend this year. Sixth grade open house is going to be from four-thirty till six. We do that because those parents for sure are new to the building, right? And they need all the information they can get, so we, we set that open house up a little bit different, where they were to hear some presentations specifically about logistics of the school, and how classes work, and all that kind of thing for, for parents. And then, our seventh and eighth grade parents will be able to come from five-thirty till seven. So, again, theirs is not set up the same, just because they've had at least a year's worth of experience with us. So, that's open house, you're welcome to come.
All right, thank you.
What date is that?
July twenty-ninth. Sorry, I don't think I said the date, yeah.
Good afternoon. I want to start by reporting a bit of positive news, and most all of this is, but I received news just a few minutes ago that one of our former students who graduated with a class of twenty-three, he was a baseball player, his name is Aiden Robertson, he was drafted into Major League Baseball today. He, he pitched at Walter State this year, and he, he has planned to go on to Virginia Tech to continue his college career, and I guess, it sounds like now he's got a decision to make about what he'll do. And I, I've certainly not talked with him this afternoon, but great news to hear. Got some events coming up at the high school, and they are also on the twenty-ninth, which is what we have referred to for many, many years as our registration day of school, it's that day where students go to school for two hours. We will begin at the high school early, early that morning at five-thirty A.M. with our senior sunrise. And so, all of our seniors will be, and the, the formal advertising will go out later in the week, but we'll invite our seniors to come out that morning, and we will enjoy some time together out at the edge of the parking lot, playing games like cornhole, listening to music, we'll have light breakfast for them, and it'll be a chance for all of our senior class just to get back together and enjoy a couple hours together before the first day of school starts. So, again, that'll be advertised later in the week. That evening, the twenty-ninth, which is a Tuesday, we will also have our open house, and that will be from five to seven P.M., and that will be for all of our students and parents, and for that matter, any community members that are interested in coming. Our open house has been well-attended in the past, and I expect it will be again. Of course, we've got a lot of new students, sophomores coming in, and so, again, I expect good attendance. For those staff members that happen to volunteer to come to senior sunrise and help out, they'll have a long day in store, but, you know, it, it, it all kind of works out in the end, we always have a few staff members that volunteer for that senior sunrise.
I'm assuming you're providing donuts.
Uh-huh, yeah, I'll be sure to bring donuts and things like that, coffee for sure.
Yeah, coffee for sure, yeah.
And, and we have some groups that donate things like that, and we appreciate them. I want to report that in late June, our Beta Club went to Nationals in Orlando, and if you, if you don't know much about how Beta Club works, and how state conference works, and national conference works, there's all manner of competition at these conferences for our students. And so, our club members that participated in seniors, this class of two thousand twenty-five seniors were eligible to participate as well, although they have graduated. And we had several placements at the Nationals, and without naming names, I'll just report that in apparel design for the club tee-shirt for Beta Club this year, we finished fifth in the nation. For three D design, we finished sixth in the nation. For creation and animation, we finished sixth. And for U.S. history at senior level, we finished seventh in the nation. So, again, just good success with that competition this summer. Final thing I wanted to share, we've got extracurriculars really just going full speed right now. It's, you know, I know it's the fourteenth of July, but we have seven organizations, and I hope I'm not leaving one out, that are in full swing already. We've got, I believe it's about twelve golfers, we've got twenty-five volleyball players, twenty in cross country, fifteen in dance, twenty-nine in cheer, right at one hundred in football, and right at seventy-five in band. And the band started formal camp today, they were out in the bus loading zone, marching as I left to come over here. So, and when I count those numbers up, we, that's right at two hundred and ninety students from our population that are at school right now, almost on a daily basis for their extracurriculars. So, those extracurriculars, I, I, I believe in them, and believe that their purpose, in many cases, to keep, keep kids in school, to keep them excited about school, and we're just glad they're participating. That's all I have to share, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Parsley? All right. Thank you.
If I might add about Hayden, Hayden was drafted in the thirteenth round today by the Texas Rangers. Yeah, it's something that, that I'm very proud of as well, he's pick number three-eighty-five in the major leagues, so that's something that I'm very proud of too, is he went through the, the hitting facility, and, and that's something that we all need to be proud of anytime, but that's, that's pretty impressive. He also pitched in the GCO, JCO World Series, did really well in that, so recognize Hayden for that as well. Good job.
I'm representing East Coffee, their, their open house is on Monday, July twenty-eighth, from four-thirty to six-thirty. North Coffee has their open house on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, from four-thirty to six-thirty, and the Raider Academy also on the twenty-ninth, and theirs is from five to seven.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we now have the call for, for intent, and we, we, what we need to do is we need to add one item to the agenda, so we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna add and then pass the agenda and the general consent items. We have a, well, let me back up a little bit before we do that, I want the record to show that we have six members present, Mr. Gillie, Mr. Cordell, and Ms. Matthews are absent, so we do have a quorum, but just as a matter of housekeeping, that to pass a, a motion still requires a majority of the board, so you'd have to have at least five votes, so a four to two vote, for instance, would not pass the motion, so, so that's just a little bit of housekeeping there. But we need to add six point three-one-two policy to the agenda as item twelve. And this basically, we found a, and, and when we get to that, we can, we can discuss that, but there is a discrepancy, so it needs to be, you know, fixed. And then, so, what I need is a motion to approve the, the, the agenda with the consent items, approve the minutes, and the, and the, the, the agenda as amended. So, do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Coon, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Yinch. Okay, any discussion on that? If not, let's, let's start with Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hansard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes six to zero. Line those out here, sorry, a little bit of paperwork here. All right, our, our first item on the agenda is the Civil Rights and Bullying Compliance Report, this is an annual report, and I, who's presenting?
Dr. Cornelius.
Dr. Cornelius is going to present that, okay.
Do you have a copy of that, right, Melissa?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Which one is it?
It's number one here, so.
Basically, basically, it speaks for itself.
There, yeah.
I mean, you have the, you have the copy and the numbers, so there's not really anything outstanding about it that, that I can tell, or that I can see. And now, this, this, notice that what you do is you get the actual number of confirmed cases of bullying. There's allegations that get reported to civil rights, and that doesn't necessarily rise to the definition of bullying. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer it for you.
Okay, I need, and we need to approve this as the board, and this gets submitted to?
Yes, it's, it gets submitted to state.
To the state, okay.
What is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just need a motion to approve, and then we can discuss, so.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Jones, second.
Second, thank you.
Mr. Hansard, okay, discussion.
What is this report used for? Do we use that as a guide of what we need to address in the coming year?
We can, and I know that at high school, for instance, I discovered when I was gathering it and looking at it earlier, I discovered a procedural, like maybe a procedural error, or not, not an error, but just a clarification that needs to be done with them on the allegation part, to see if they're out, if an allegation actually gets to the administrative level where it needs to go. So, I'm going to take care of that at the beginning of the year, and that'll, it'll solve, that should solve it, that should solve itself. It may lead to a little increase, you never know, but that's nothing, that's nothing, no harm, no foul on any of them, it was just, I think, a lack of, you know, procedural context a little bit.
I know that there was, you know, a couple that had more numbers, you might say, of bullying than other sections, and, and that would be something that would be very informative.
It is, yes.
For maybe to look at.
Absolutely.
Dr. Cornelius, you said it, it was reported to civil rights, can you explain that a little more?
That's the, that's the civil rights data that we have in data and compliance, civil rights compliance, that I have to do, well, we had to do it two years in a row this time, but they should finally be back on their every-other-year cycle. And every district in the state, every school, every district has to report out, for every school, a whole lot of, you know, data in bullying, bullying and harassment is one of those, it's a bit, it's a big piece of it, yeah, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's interesting to see that the, the largest number of bullying is at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of school year, yes, 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 and then it levels out.
Dr. Cornelius, so, we're saying, according to this, we have zero confirmed bullying cases involving electronic technology?
That's, that, the word, the key word's going to be confirmed, that's right, that's right, that's right.
So, nobody's, basically, nobody is, what you're saying is nobody's turned that in?
Well, they may have alleged it, but then it gets investigated, and then they determine that it actually doesn't rise to the level of bullying.
Because the, the things that, that, you know, that Warren County had was nowhere near that. That's kind of hard to believe, you know? I'm not saying, I don't disagree, but it, their, their findings and your findings are two different things, I guess, and that's just, that's kind of mind-blowing.
Well, my findings are. My findings are. Well, my findings are, my findings are from the student information system that the building level administrators enter. So, I just pull that down. When the school year closes, I simply pull down those numbers.
This kinda verifies what the two prin, the principals told us, you know, during that work session about cell phones, that they really didn't have an issue. And that is, that's great.
Yeah.
That we don't have that.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely lower than the state average, you know.
Yeah.
You know, from what they showed us, what we were shown, and what, you know, I'd seen on the state average, it's mind blowing, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions for Dr. Cornelius? Any discussion? All right. I'll go ahead and vote. This is to, the motion is to approve this civil rights and bullying compliance report for middle of the state. So, Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes 6 to 0. All right. Next up is laptops for the, and that is A2.
Mr. Skipper, our CTE director, has applied and received.
Okay.
And I don't believe it's embargoed anymore. And once again, Mr. Skipper doing Skipper things, $50,000 Perkins grant, and his goal to use that, utilize that money to replace our current outdated laptops with your, with yours approval.
Okay.
So, that's one, that's a feat getting it. Congratulations. And two, your, your approval is needed for the purchase of those replacement laptops.
Okay. And I see Mr. Damewood wants to chime in here.
Oh, not at all. I'm just being ready, just to be more efficient in case I get a question.
Okay. All right. So, I would need a motion to approve, so what, what are we looking at here? To approve the acceptance of the grant and the use of the funds?
Use of the, spending of the funds on laptops.
Okay. So, we've already accepted the grant, so we're just approving the use of the funds?
The spending, yes, sir.
Okay. So, the, so I need a motion to approve the use of the funds to buy the laptops.
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Hodge.
I'll second.
Mr. Coon, second. All right. Any discussion, questions?
I guess it's another thing that's coming up, that's coming around the bend. Mr. Damewood, you may have heard, some of the schools now are looking at to get rid of laptops.
Well, I'll tell you, the, the reason why...
Do we want, I guess, the, the question that I've got is, do we wanna spend that money? And then that's something to, for the, I know, because I know that the, the state's looking at that too, and some of the school districts around is looking at that as well, so.
Of getting rid of laptops?
Mm-hmm.
Well, now, don't get confused that between laptops and Chromebooks and MacBooks.
Right.
The reason why CTE, the reason why CTE needs laptops and not Chromebooks is because of their programming curriculum.
Gotcha.
Chromebooks are, are great, with the exception of few things.
Yes, sir.
Video editing, audio editing, coding.
Yes, sir.
At the level, and plus, the software and the curriculum they're using are using particular Windows modules.
Gotcha.
Software. That's why it doesn't really work on a Chromebook.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Further questions, discussion?
Oh, I did notice that it was 4,710 above what he got in.
That's coming from his CTE files.
Okay. I didn't know if we wanted to try to cover some of that for him or what, but...
I think he's planned for that.
Okay. We are voting on the motion to approve the dispersal of this fund for the laptops. Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes 6 to 0. Next up, Mr. Hargrove, we are going to talk, and I guess it's probably not salary per se, it's probably more supplement is what we're talking about here.
Yes, sir. It's a additional $6,000.
Yeah, I caught that later on the agenda, so.
It's an, it's an additional $6,000, $500 a month for the head mechanic's salary. We're already approved the, it's my understanding, we've already approved, approved the position?
I don't think we have anything for that.
Job description.
Not the position.
Right. We're not adding a position.
So, basically, the head mechanic position is going to get $6,000 supplement then?
Yes, sir.
Per year. Okay. $500 a month.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I would need a motion to approve the $6,000 a year supplement for the head mechanic position?
I make that motion.
Ms. Yinch?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge, okay. The motion is to approve the, the $6,000 a year supplement for the head mechanic position. Do we have any discussion, questions? Easy peasy. Okay. Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Co, uh, Ms. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes 6 to 0. Next up is student fees, and that's to you, Mr. Hargrove.
Yes, sir. And our recommendation is, our elementary school, schools require zero fees, and our middle school and our high school continue as they have been with the fees that we produced at the last work session.
Okay. So, basically, zero fees for, for elementary schools, and then fees for the, the middle school, Raider Academy, and the high school?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I would need a motion to approve that. So, this would be a change in the student fees structure. So, do I have a motion?
Someone?
Mr. Hanser, second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones, okay. So, the motion is to approve the revised fee structure, so there's no fees at the, at the elementary schools, and, but from, when the middle school, Raider Academy, and high school remains unchanged. So, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, the elementary schools receive fee waiver, I mean, no, not fee waivers. Well, what's the name for it? We get from the state? It is the?
Fee waivers.
It is fee waivers. Well, how will that, how will we use that? Since we're waiving the fees, since we're paying for it? Or will we use that first?
Ms. Yinch.
And then add to it? Because we get that money from the state for this specific reason. So, that would help, if that's, you know, if all the fee waivers are used up, and then, then we supplement the rest. I mean, how would that be used? Because it's sent to us for fee waivers.
So, I think maybe the only thing we're talking about is, like, instructional fees. So, there'll still be field trip fees that will help, that will help cover the students that can't pay for field trips. And then also, for the things that, like, I know that Deerfield turned in a recorder fee, that will help for pay for those students that they could probably use some of that funding, or pay for the whole class, the whole class to have out of the fee waiver. So, that can still...
I agree with that, but I know in the past, you know, we've, I've always been a proponent of that money being spent completely, because that's what it's for. And then I was told that, oh, you can't do that, you know, it's for certain things. And I think we can be, you know, we can use our, our imagination, or not necessarily imagination, but a lot of different...
And they do. They reach out to us, and we get in contact with the auditor and run it. Usually, we usually try to help give as much feedback and help them spend that money the way it really should be. And I, they do ask, and we do try to spend it. There are a few schools that really struggle with it, but we do, for the most part, most schools reach out to us and we help with that.
But I, I think you see what I'm saying. You know, we get the fee waiver money from, from the state, and then, and, and we're paying for it now as a school system. Then if that comes up that that's not used, it's like we're sup, you know, we're supplying the money that's coming into our school system for fee waivers.
Yeah, I, I do, I do get what you mean. I understand that.
So, I guess it's just make sure that principals know they can be creative in how, how those funds are used, because it's gonna benefit those children, you know.
I do think most get pretty creative. We do, I think.
Yeah, most schools are, are. I know Deerfield always spends theirs.
Like, our fifth grade, they do the Wax Museum every year, and we have asked about the presentation work for the permanent spending.
Right.
So, we've asked about those things before, and things like that.
And I know you've used yours every year. So, you think that you, you can still use it all, plus what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a politician, so if it's acceptable, I'll get to you.
Okay. Hickerson, I'm sure can do the same.
All right. Further discussion? Any questions? Okay. Then we're ready to vote on the revised student fee structure. So, Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
No.
Okay. No, and I will vote aye. So, that passes 5 to 1. By the skin of its teeth. Okay. Next up is the AI program, the, we have the responsible implementation enforcement of our AI program. And I assume Mr. Hanser, or Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Damewood have comments on that, and?
Mr. Damewood has already presented the information to, to, to our board. And it's my understanding that we are meeting compliance.
Right there.
As far as the state goes, we're just letting you know, Mr. Damewood. Yes, the legislation requires that our director supplies a report to the state and to the board about how we are going to be compliant with the AI policy.
Okay, which we approved last month.
Yes, correct.
All right. So, what do we need to do as a board? Do we, we just need to approve that?
Absorb it into your consciousness. That's it. There's no vote or anything.
Okay. So, we're not voting on anything?
No, no, it's just, this is a record. Probably next year, maybe an email will suffice. But right, we just wanted to make sure, we, we got a new kid on the block, so we just wanted to make sure that was all covered.
I, I get it, yeah. So, okay.
Okay.
And it's on YouTube record, so.
That is correct. We're just making sure our boxes are checked.
Okay. So, there's nothing to vote on here?
No, sir.
We just need to make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's with filing with the state then. All right. Okay. So, nothing needs to be voted on there. Next up, we have the, item six is the director performance goals, and Ms. Frida.
Oh, okay. I have met with Mr. Hargrove, and we've gone over these performance goals that you have already had a copy of, and we approved them previously. And he, he seemed to be pretty well satisfied with them. And in fact, he's already started working on some of them. So, I thought that was, a lot of credit should be given to Mr. Hargrove, because he's taken these seriously, and knows that this is a priority for the school board and for our community. And he's already started to process on one or two of them. And I also want to commend you on even addressing some of the other concerns or issues that the board thought needed improvement that's not on these. It's not, wasn't the top four, but were, you know, presented by all board members. He's also taken that into a consideration that, that those are some things that need to be addressed, possibly in the future too. So.
Thank you.
Very good meeting, and I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we did discuss these at the work session.
Yes, that's what I meant. We discussed, not approved, sorry.
Well, we kinda, kinda did approve to talk to the board about it. But, all right. So, I need a, a motion to approve these.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Coon?
Second.
Mr. Hanser. Okay. Any discussion on, on the goals? We did kinda cover these fairly thoroughly at, at the work session, and I think everybody was pretty well happy with them. So, but, any?
I'd, I'd just like to make a comment, and, you know, Ms. Frida and Holly, y'all done an excellent job in putting this together.
Absolutely.
And presenting it, and thank you very much for all the work that you put into it.
Right. And just as a matter of clarity, too, these are the goals that are specified in the contract with Mr. Hargrove. So, we specified in there that we were gonna have four goals. These are those four goals that are gonna be incorporated into the contract. They come with, each goal comes with a $2,500 performance bonus attached to it. So, so these are, are the goals that fulfill that part of the contract. All right.
Yeah. Thank you, Frida, you and Holly both as well. But even some of the, the goals that wasn't in our top four, you, you and Holly came up with those. And that's very commendable for y'all for taking your time out. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah. And for everybody to know how this was developed, was that every, every board member submitted four areas that they would like to see a performance goal address. And we compiled them all together and, and put them in sections and determined what the top four areas were of all the, all the goals combined. So, and then we had to make it measurable, of course. And, and it's been a lot of work with our board, looking at them and discussion, and so that's how it came up. And it could not have been done without the full commitment of the board and their participation. So, it's, it's a, it's a school board effort. So, that's where they all originated from.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, then Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes 6 to 0. Next item on the agenda is the annual agenda. So, so, do you wanna discuss what, Melissa might really be the one to discuss what, what this is all about. So, and just to kinda introduce it, so.
So, oh, I don't, I don't know.
It's basically just our annual calendar, what's, what's going on here and stuff, and we just need to approve this every year. So, it's there on the desktop. It goes month by month, what's on the agenda for that month, things we need to cover to get done to meet our criteria. Yeah.
It's, it goes along with policies.
Okay. So, with the policy, yes. So, and with that, if I can get a motion to approve the annual agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual agenda.
Okay. Ms. Yinch, second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones, okay. Any, any discussion on this? Any recommended changes or anything like that? Did anybody see anything that pops out at them? I mean, this really covers everything about when we get the, you know, the bullying report, when we do the evaluations. Obviously, budget update is on there every year, so there's really, you know, that's pretty routine, and it, it comports with policy. So, there's no discussion?
We can also add things if we need to, right?
Yeah, yeah.
As always, so.
This is kind of the bare bones, you know, the framework, and we need to meet policy.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes 6 to 0. Next one up is the, well, this one is the changing the sped assistant to a 221-day calendar, and Mr. Hargrove?
I spoke with the Director of Special Ed for Coffee County Schools, that's Mr. Charlie Westmoreland, and we felt like that position could serve its duty and perform with less days on it. The secret, the current secretary was, bit her family style, but the position itself, we're... The secret, the current secretary was, bit her family style, but the position itself, we're actually just reducing the day and he feels like he can run, run his area with, with a secretary there for 211 days, so. Oh, 221, I'm sorry.
And that's basically just in the?
Just removing days and saving money.
So going from how many days to 221 days?
257 to 221.
Okay, clarifying that they're fine with it, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I need a motion on, on this?
I so moved.
Ms. Jones?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon? Okay, any discussion on this?
I just think it needs to be clarified on the, on our agenda, it said moving to 211, 211 calendar. And I think that was kind of, uh.
I, I sent out a new one, a updated one.
Yeah. I think that was out to the public earlier with that and it was kind of confusing. I just wanted to clear that up, that this, this person is, is reducing the amount of days.
Yes.
And it's two, from 257 to 221. And that's, it's kind of confusing, so I just want to make sure that everybody knew that.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes six to zero. Next up, we have the TSBA Performance Evaluation Instrument for the, the Director. And I guess I'll just handle this. Is, we did discuss this in the work session, the last work session. And as part of our contract with TSBA to search for a new director, we contracted with them to do the first year's evaluation. So they have provided us with this particular form and that's basically what we're approving, is this particular form that TSBA will use this year. That's their form that they recommend. And then next year, we can go back to our form, which probably needs some work and we probably sit down and work on that. But what we're voting on, what we'd be voting on here, making a motion on, is to approve the TSBA form to evaluate the director. They would do that for the first year and then we're back to our normal process, so. So with that, a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Hanser, second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Yinch? Okay, any discussion?
This is something that, Mr. Hargrove, you're aware of this, correct? So that's, it's not something, he's not new to this and so.
Been around the block once or twice?
Yeah. Well, we've got two. We just talked about one evaluation.
Right, right.
That we had.
Yeah.
And then this one is a second one that TSBA is having that, that we were going through with the contract. So just so the people at home understand what, what we're doing here and there's not two evaluations that we're going over.
Right, exactly. That's, yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, sir.
So any further discussion on that? Okay, Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes six to zero. Item number 10 is the, the CTE EPP Program reimbursement and Mr. Hargrove?
Our culinary arts teacher at our high school, Ms. Ally Segman is. As part of our CTE EPP or Education Prep Program, they have to go through training to renew their license. And she applied for a scholarship and it costs money for us to, to send those teachers through that training. So she got half of the training paid for. So big shout out to her for, for that. Helps school system, helps her, that's a, that's a team player, so just like to recognize her.
All right, so what, what are, what are we voting on then to, what is the amount of reimbursement?
I believe the amount was.
$2,000.
$2,000.
Okay, so we're voting to approve $2,000 to?
We, we had said that it was going to be $5,000.
$5,000.
When Mr. Skipper came in and then she's got the.
Scholarship.
Scholarship, so it would be the difference of that. I'm not sure exactly. We need to make sure.
Okay.
But it would be the difference of the $5,000 to whatever she got in the scholarship.
Okay.
This is like we did before for the CTE, Mr. Larn, Larnin.
Okay, I'm just making sure we got the right information, so we got the proper motion. We don't want to go back. You know, say we shorted her 50 cents or something.
Yes, so I will say the difference.
Yeah, okay, so we just want to approve the difference between the $5,000?
Do you know what it is, April? I haven't even seen it. I, I don't know. I don't know, you know.
So we could probably just make a motion that say we'll fund the difference and get a report back at the next meeting what that actually was? Does that work?
Are you, are you positive it's no more than $5,000? Because you gotta be careful. If it turned out to be $20,000, you get what I'm saying? You might want to put a max amount for that difference.
I, I'm, when he came.
If you don't know the amount, that's kind of scary.
No, we knew the amount was $5,000 that they had approved, that he'd come and talk to everyone about. It's just how much her scholarship that she got would be.
So.
So not to exceed $5,000, but it.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we pay the CTE fee up to $5,000? The difference between the scholarship up to $5,000, which shouldn't be that much since she's gotten a scholarship.
Who's second?
Ms. Hodge, second stat. Any questions or discussions? All right, there being none, Mr. Coon? I guess I should restate the motion where, the motion is we're going to reimburse up to $5,000 to, okay.
We're going to reimburse the difference in, between the scholarship and the fee up to $5,000.
Okay, got it.
Guess that would be.
That is the motion. All right, Mr. Coon said aye. Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes six to zero. Next up, we have the budget update. And Ms. April, that's.
Um, this is the budget update for the month of May, or through the month of May. Month of May, we received $767,000 in revenue. Total year-to-date, $47.8 million, which brings our budget to 91.69% of received. $678,000 of May revenue was local, $62,000 was state and then 26 other. Notice that it's low this month because in the month of May, we don't receive a TISA payment and we only get 10. So May is one of the months we don't get TISA funding. We will get two more TISA payments, but not in the month of May. Expenditures, we spent $4.3 million in the month of May, which brought our balance to date of, to $43 million. $43.3 million, which would make, makes us at 79.11% of budget compared to last year, 74.32%. Majority of that difference is in benefits and pay raises. And then if their budget is on track, we still have two months of expenditures to record a payroll because we're a month behind, so the next report that you get for June will just be an estimate on how we finish the year. You won't get the final June report until probably August, until we close the month, close the year. But I will take any questions about this budget update if you have any.
All right, we need a motion to approve the budget update?
I make the motion to approve the budget update.
Ms. Yinch, okay, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon, seconds. All right, any questions for Ms. Billson?
April, I noticed that there is year-to-date 167.99% on education charges. What exactly are education charges?
So in that account, that's where we budget, like any kind of receipts from the schools. So like if they go on a field trip or whatever, that's what they pay back for the bus, for the bus and the fuel, the bus driver and the fuel. And then also, we receive any kind of community, so that's like where our, we would receive our ESP or, or after-school program funding in, but we didn't have any of that last year, but, so those are the two things that would hit that area.
Okay, so.
We had budgeted 63,000 and year-to-date on the receipts from schools, we're at 88,000. So that's why we're exceeded. So that's just the revenue we receive from the schools to pay for the bus driver and the fuel for, or extra labor, anything for like a sporting event. So anything that we would bill the school for would hit this area of the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? So I, little, so that we can go on the record here, we had a discussion about fund balance and I just kind of wanted it on YouTube video here. And just so, you know, any board members that might not understand and the public and any county commissioners that might be watching, can you explain the difference between the restricted and the unrestricted portions of the fund balance? Because that was not clear to me and I thought it might just be good for everybody to hear that.
So we have two, we can call it two different sets of fund balance. So one is unassigned, which is what we can use for anything. So anything that comes through that we would need to do a budget amendment for that we wouldn't have in our budget, we could use for unassigned fund balance. And then we have what you, a cer, certain section of fund balance that's called restricted or assigned. So I'll give some examples. So in that assigned or restricted fund balance there, we may restrict textbook line. So we may budget $400,000 a year in textbook and we may only spend 300. Well, we can restrict that 100,000 to be used in a textbook line or in a textbook purchase in years to come. So like when we get to year, I think 2028, when we get to English adop, next English adoption, that could cost us $1.5 million. We already have that assigned fund balance to take, to help take care of those textbooks. Another, another large section are technology, where we're, anything that technology that doesn't get spent can be a, a sign, put in an assigned fund and we can use those. I think Mr. Damewood has a schedule of when our Chromebooks expire. So we will, the, all the S or Chromebooks that we purchase at some point will expire and we may need to come up with $2 million of Chromebook money to, to purchase. Instead of having to find it in the budget, we have these assigned restricted fund balances to where we can plan for the future. Another one is buses, so transportation, so like if diesel goes up or we have to unexpectedly purchase a bus the county can't purchase, we have a transportation assigned fund balance that we can use for the transportation area. And there's several of those. Those are probably the three largest. We have the capital one that we have the lighting and the track improvement money in. Those are probably the largest ones we have. There's some small ones like grants or whatever, but that probably makes the majority of. So when I talk about a budget amendment, it can affect unassigned. Like it'll be unassigned fund balance if it doesn't relate to any of those areas. Or if it does, it can pull from the restricted areas. So our total fund balance, total unassigned is around 12 million. And I think our unrestricted or restricted assigned is around 8 million. So we have about a $20 million, $21 million fund balance when you combine those two together.
So pretty much every dollar in the restricted fund balance is earmarked for something.
Right, a grant or an area in the budget that we could foresee a huge purchase in the future.
Right, okay, thank you for, for that.
I hope that makes sense.
That makes, makes sense to me, so, and I didn't understand that before, how that, how that worked, so that, that breakout, so, thank you. Any questions for April?
And I'm going to try to give that, once we close the year, in the, in one of the work sessions, I'll, I think we did it last year or the year before, provide a list of what those assigned funds are so you can see the balances in those. Once we close the year, I'll have a more firm number on each assigned fund.
Oh, that'll be nice, yes. All right. So the, the motion on the floor is to approve the, the budget update as, as written, so Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes six to zero. Item 12 on the agenda and you, everybody should have a written copy of this, is the change. And, and Mr. Hargrove, if you can explain this one or?
You're talking about the change to the electronic.
Policy 6.312.
Yes, sir. If you look down on line 16, the first word is designate. And we are striking the rest of the line of 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21 because they're in conflict with our discipline policy. They don't match up. So that would, if we struck those sentences, would put us in compliance.
That's the easiest way, so, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I need a motion to approve this change. Do I have a motion?
I so moved.
Mr. Coon?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge? Okay, and, okay, so discussion. I would also like to point out that the TSBA policy has also come down and I know Melissa has it. And so this is going to make another journey through the Policy Committee, so, but we need to make this change now because this is being implemented as we speak and we need to.
It makes us functional and Dr. Cornelius can post it on our sites, puts us in.
Okay, so that's why we need to do this now.
Yes, sir.
And not just wait, okay, so.
We'll revisit.
Questions or discussion? Okay. That is the change, okay, Mr. Hanser? I guess, did we make a motion? Yes, we did, okay. Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes six to zero on that change. We've concluded the business portion of the meeting. Now we are on to. Well, what did I do with my agenda? Let me bring that back up here. All right, so we have, we don't have student ambassadors tonight. We have items for discussion, so. We'll get to the director's report, but mainly for board members, so anybody have anything they'd like to throw out there?
I do.
Yes.
I want to give a big shout out to the third grade teachers at Hickerson because they are amazing. That's Kayla Kanjanabout and Shannon Dawson and they are some hardworking women. And I'm so thankful that, actually, both of my sons have been in their classes. So I'm, I'm very glad that their grade worked out the way that it did for Hickerson and above all, like all the scores are great. So I'm very happy with that. And also, I wanted to thank Carlin Cotton and all of the people that are working on giving these free meals away on Friday. It is a beautiful thing to see. They are a well-oiled machine and there's a lot of good people out there that have put a. people out there that have put a lot of effort and a lot of time into this, and it's just wonderful. So, I'm very thankful for that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I just had a question. I noticed that we have hired two new art teachers. Do we have the third one on board yet?
For sure, yes.
We have three.
We have three.
You've got three, good.
All right, anyway.
So, you have three. I knew someone's gonna apply.
Yeah, our three, so.
Watcher?
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
Um, since it's items for discussion, I had, I appreciate Stephanie, or whoever's responsible, I guess Mr. Hargrove is responsible for getting this to us, is the, the, you know, the employee, the new hires and so forth, to us, and it's very informative and, and very good to know, because, you know, as a board member, people ask, well, who, who is this person that just got in this position and so forth and so forth? And so, it's really good to have this. We, we were knowledgeable. But I wanted to ask about, are the Esther funds still paying for Kim Avron and Brenda Brown?
No, so, we put them in our budget to finish, come back, in our general school budget, to come back and finish a few reports.
Okay, 'cause I knew that the Esther was, and it was on this, and I thought, well, maybe we got, got it for another year.
No, Esther was, Esther's completely gone, so we moved those over to our budget, so we could continue to get their support.
Okay. And, um, I know there were some new positions. Is the special ed coordinator, is that new, or is that, it said?
Yes, ma'am, that's a new position. We have enormous caseloads in elementary, and some of our elementary schools only had one sped teacher that were, were teaching five intervention classes plus holding fifty, forty-five, fifty-five files. So, they were just way overwhelmed. So, this position was created to offset some of that paperwork, so they could focus more on students during their interventions.
So, it's just at specific schools?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's at the, it's North Coffee, East Coffee, Hickerson Elementary, and New Union Elementary. And they, this person will be holding all of the fourth and fifth-grade files for all the students there. And their caseload's gonna be approximately sixty students to start off.
Okay, and then there was, of course, the art. It only had two, but we've gotten three filled now.
We do, and it, it may just been something that was overlooked.
This, this probably came to us prior to, this is probably not the latest report, you know, as of today, I'm sure. And then, there, of course, there's a new special ed teacher at Coffee County Raider Academy.
Yes, ma'am. Coffee County Raider Academy had a thirty student, thirty-one or thirty-two student increase in population in one cohort. So, that position had to be put there to help assist with that, that massive growth. They went from fifty students to around eighty students in one cohort. Now, of course, that cohort will eventually, the next year, will be going to the tenth grade, so there may be some more adjustments made there. But as of right now, the Raider Academy had a, a large influx of students with, with some special needs.
And then the new position at the high school math teacher, I'm sure, that was just a, you needed more math teachers.
That was probably approved.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, thank you for this.
Yes, ma'am.
This is very helpful.
Our HR department, Ms. Langham, they've, I mean, I'm, I'm proud to say we have less than a handful of certified positions that are posted, and I believe that accurate number is two or three. So, as we're heading into our taxi mode to get ready to take off on this year's adventure, I mean, we have some non-certified folks we're trying to gather up, and, but as far as certified, we only lack about two, two or three positions.
That's good.
So...
Mr. Hansert?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to tell Mr. Hargrove that this has been great. Like, I'm very impressed with you, and I love your weekly emails and look forward to reading them. There was a time when I dreaded those things, and I'm very excited about them now. So, I just appreciate you, and I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to chime in on that, too, because, you know, as, as Ms. Frida said, it was, there were some things on there I saw that she's been talking about for, like, the past twelve months, and they were on your, your email update this week, and that was pretty amazing. So, you know, like, the painting at the North Coffee.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, it's kinda like, wow, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, it, it, I will say something now, but, yeah, I, I mean, it's a, communication is the key to everything, and it, and it starts with you, and it goes all the way down to us, and it goes throughout the whole school system. You know, communication, if, if, you know, and that's the biggest thing that, that, that you have done, you know, is to have that bit of communication that, those emails help us to at least know what we're doing whenever people comes to us and ask us questions. As, as Ms. Anderson was talking about, you know, Ms. Jones was talking about, that, uh, it, it helps us to answer questions instead of us being left in the dark when somebody comes up to us. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Coon?
I just have to agree with the, with the emails. They're very, very informative and, you know, keeps us all up to date, and I really appreciate the depth that you go into explaining a lot of the information that's on them. You know, it, it, it's a good feeling that, you know, that we stay informed.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Okay. Committee, do we, have we had committee reports? But I don't think we've had any committees since...
In fact, we probably need to, we haven't had one in a minute. We probably need to schedule a, a policy meeting.
I mean, we've been going at such a pace that I, I, it's kinda like, we went two weeks without a meeting. It was kinda like, I feel like I'm missing something.
We've been withdrawing or something.
Yeah, withdrawal, that's, that's it.
I do not have withdrawals.
Okay. All right, director's report.
I appreciate y'all, your patience with me bumbling through tonight's meeting. Maybe I'm just better at email. To echo Ms., Ms. Peacock Hodge, Ms. Cotton and her team of Kelly Arnold and Jessica Popance, they have served over twenty-four thousand meals this summer during our summer feedings or in summer school. And we have one more week left. Thanks again to Team Peacock Hodge, 'cause you've taken part of that, and they appreciate your help. Our district was also awarded a grant that provides fruits and vegetables for our students during school year for snacks. So, our nutrition department, our personnel, HR, on Thursday, we're hosting the director of EMS from Rutherford County at a safe, uh, safety tabletop exercise from eight until noon here. Neighboring districts will be visiting. Our local sheriff, fire department, EMS, EMA, and homeland security will be involved in that activity. And we work a lot in our districts on school level. Well, this is at the district level. I'm anxious to, to learn and grow a lot, but that, that's here on Thursday. Spoke about student ambassadors a while ago. A former student ambassador, Ambassador Ava McIntosh, and I'll share the thank-you note with you all after the meeting. Just wanted to, she wrote a thank-you note, "Doing things the Raider way the right way," and I appreciate that. She's top-notch. Shout-out to you all for the impact.
She has great parents, also.
Yes. Um, August nineteenth work session that will be held here, Wolds?
Wolds.
Wolds. We'll share along with Dr. Blessing, and we're also gonna hopefully discuss the Raptor in the safety part of that. We have summer law conference coming up this weekend in Gatlinburg, and we already spoke about, we need to probably look into scheduling some committee meetings. And I have one more ask. This is our last board meeting before the, our shift. We're on the taxi right now, getting ready to hit the runway. Please keep our teachers, our, our educational assistants, our bus drivers, our administrators in your prayers as we try to get this school year started off. But if you guys would do that, we would greatly appreciate that. But other than that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shores, Capitol Projects update?
Yes. Uh, we've had quite a bit of stuff going on, lot things. One of the things I'm, I'm running into is, I can't remember exactly what I talked about the last time, so, if I repeat it again, my apology, my apologies if I figure that it's not meant to be. Furniture at the high school, well, first of all, I'll start off the furniture in this room. If you look around, we've got some new tables, new chairs. Turned out really nice. We've got the furniture in the two offices here, as well as in Cos. High School will be getting their furniture tomorrow, so they're looking forward to that. Countertop at the high school, this is one of the science countertops. It's, it got the kindergarten top on it. We, it was one that was actually missed last year, and we finished it up, and our maintenance installed it this last week. Uh, and actually, I started on the second page, still on the first page, I'm, I'm sorry. Deerfield parking lot paving is finished. Uh, let's see, going down to the CTE building, and I'm, I'm getting ready to go over some things that we've already talked about. Let me try to break it up a little bit. Uh, the laminate, window laminate is just about finished. We still have to check some of the buildings, make sure everything that, nothing was missed, because there were so many windows. It's gonna take, it's gonna take the principals actually looking at some of the buildings, trying to get around to every one of them and looking at everything is, is a pretty large task for one person. We still lack some vinyl on the school buildings, on some of the school buildings, so they will be finishing that up. The CTE door access, and I've already talked about it, it is installed. Door hardware at East Coffee High School, filter on New Union, they came in last week, and it been installed, and is making our library, not our libraries, our gyms at those buildings and our cafeterias safer, as well as Ms. Prater's class at the high school, because they didn't have the side light, and the door, we couldn't use that door. That was in it. Uh, let's see. Okay, moving on down, the, the theater step reflectors and the note pieces, they're supposed to be installed this week. The gym bleacher modifications, we've been working with bleachers and seats to get this started. They wanted to start the week of our homecoming. You know, if anything about our homecoming, you do not mess up the bleachers in the gym during homecoming. It's just not a smart thing to do. So, they are starting the Monday, they have worked with us the Monday after fall break, I'm sorry, not after fall break, after homecoming, which is on the fifteenth of September. Uh, that, this is not a normal job that they've done, so they can't tell us the exact timeline. They are figuring three to four weeks. They will finish up, and will be done by the, the due date that they were supposed to be done, which is the Monday after fall break, which I think is the thirteenth of October. So, that's on track, and, and everything's looking good. We actually met out there with bleachers and seats today, Mr. Parsley and myself, and, and things are looking up. They're working with us as far as the volleyball taking place. This is during volleyball season. They're gonna be able to continue to use either one or two of the courts and, and work with us. We also have a tournament that's going on that weekend, and they're, it's gonna work out really well with us. So, that's, that's been a, a blessing to, to be able to, to work with us, you know, work with the programs that's going on, which is a big step, 'cause it's a lot taking place. Um, let's take, we are still waiting for the engineers to give us the drawings and the specs for the lighting at the athletic fields, so that I can then turn around and put it in the paper and start the bidding process. And, and it's, it's really in their, in their court to get it to me. So, I've called them a couple of times, and it's just taken a while to, to get that information.
Does it normally take that long? It does seem like a really long time.
It seems, it's, it's been, it's been a very long time, and, and that's the reason why I've called them a couple of times, and I, I get, I'm being told that it's almost finished.
I'm getting impatient with all of the old things over here, so...
And, uh, I, I don't have an answer other than what I, I can, I've called them and, and trying to find out. Um, as far as the hills where East Coffee and New Union access controls, we're still waiting on that from the company, and, and I need to contact them a bit, again, to try to get them in, but there's a lot, a lot of that work is taking place at this time. CHS, CTE sidewalk repair and additions, that has been completed, and it's turned out really well. It works in really good with the, the paving that was done. It's, it's gonna do several things. It's gonna keep kids out of wet gravel and, and, and tracking dirt into the buildings. It, it's, it's just, it's really made a difference. I think it's gonna make a big difference this next year. Uh, the paving at the high school is not complete. The paving is. They did finish the concrete as well. We thought everything was done. I went, I went out and checked it. There was about four of the concrete pads that was, there were the stoops outside the doors. The tinselies ran over them with the roller, and it broke them, and they're, they're cutting them out and re-pouring the concrete. And once that's done, the, the paving should be done, but it's, it's turned out, in my opinion, very well. It's, it's very nice back there. It's, it's probably, well, I would say nicest it's been ever. There's no other way to put it. It, it's nicer than it's ever been. So, it's turned out really nice, and if there's some time, you could drive back. You, you can see just by looking over the gate. If you can't, if the gate's not open, you, you can tell the difference. It, it really, it's turned, turned out well. The, the drainage is in, it's working well, so everything's the way it should be, from what I can tell. I think that's pretty much where we are, unless you've got any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Shores? It's pretty amazing when you think about all the Capitol projects we have going on with the list here, so I think most people don't appreciate how many thing, how many balls you got in the air at the same time.
Mr. Shores has been very extremely busy. I shared a picture with you all, panoramic of the parking lot back, that he's talked about, so you get an idea of what that looks like.
Any questions for Mr. Shores?
I had someone concerned about, I'm glad you brought that up, about the volleyball, that they weren't gonna get to have their senior night at the high school. So, they can do that now?
We've been, uh, Mr. Parsley and I actually talked to Mr. Spears, the coach of the volleyball team, and whenever he saw that the, the dates that we were needing for the bleachers and seats to start, he actually did some arranged movements on some of the dates, and they're gonna be having the senior night at the high school.
Okay, good.
During the week of homecoming, so it should work out pretty nice.
Okay, that's good. That's real good. And I don't know how, if this has anything to do with, with us, but I would like to say that those people that are building that building out there, the TCAT College out on Woodbury Highway, I have never seen such more of a professional group. They are tidy, they, they leave no messes, they're in there working every day, and, uh, there is, I don't know if Matt and Shaw has ever even given us a bid or anything, but that is, I'm very impressed with them, and they have a, um, the person that's over the, the, the building program has been in our office two or three times, making sure that they are not disturbing our, our lot, and, and they did some things that, that helped us out. So, it's really a neat thing, and I think that's so good for Coffee County that we're getting that in this county. But they're really doing a good job.
All right, any questions for Mr. Shores?
No, I'd like to say that, that parking lot back there is fantastic. It is miraculous. I mean, it's just to be able to, to tile that end back there to the hitting facility asphalt that we already had, and it's just a, a blessing. It really is, and it looks fantastic. And I commend, commend everybody that's done that, and it looks fantastic, you know, it's just, I think it'll serve a lot of purposes, as, as you talked about, and really, really, really proud of that. Makes me very, very proud.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
Is that it?
Can we do that?
That's the end of the meeting.
It's just six-thirty.
What's that?
It's just six-thirty.
Yeah, it's only six-thirty. We can talk for another hour if you want.
I'm okay. I'm okay with it.
We're good, we're good.
Motion to adjourn?
I make, so move.
Mr. Hansert, Mr. Coon, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.